Hey. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for May the 5th, 2015. We were in executive session. We came out. We're back in regular session and I'd like to have a roll call again, please.
There are five selectmen present this evening as well as town council. Town administrator is not present this evening.
All right, I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance next, please. Mr. Holmes, could you lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Announcements. Mr. Titlebaum, you're up first.
Yes, just a reminder from the town moderator that she's still seeking applicants for the Junk Study Committee that was formed at the recent town meeting. I don't know that this is exactly an announcement, maybe it's more of a report, but it wasn't about an official body, so I guess it's not a liaison report. Anyway, I was fortunate enough to attend both the Oyster Festival Gala at Rosebrook on Friday night and also the Oyster Festival itself on Sunday downtown. And I just wanted to congratulate the organizers and everybody who attended on a well-run event, hardly a speck of litter to be seen. People were neat, they were organized, they were responsible in their consumption of alcohol. I think the vendors all left quite happy with the amount of goods they sold and it was nice to get this on a nice warm sunny day as opposed to the dreary drizzly day we had last year. So, kudos to the Wareham Villages Association, their president, Mr. Brady, and all of the people there who put us together.
All right, Ms., uh, no, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to thank, and I'll make it general because there were so many people that I don't want to leave anybody out. But on Saturday, we had little Jacob's Run. This is a little boy, Stevie, uh, Stevie, oh God, he's gonna kill me, Berenger, from Onset Sports Review. His little nephew has been very sick since he was born with cancer and other complications. And so every year, we have this little run, a bike run, and a benefit for little Jacob. And I gotta tell ya, the raffle, Mr. Slavin was there for part of it. I mean, it went on and on and on. And that's a testimony, every one of those baskets was donated by a local business in the town of Wareham or Onset. And I don't know, Alan, there had to be at least seventy baskets there, right?
Easy, if not more.
Easy, right? Yeah. And there were some bigger prizes. And I just want to say that, you know, I know when you get these events, you know, it feels like, oh, they're always begging for something. But boy, to see that little boy Saturday, I remember him when it started and he had tubes, building his little sweatshirt up like that, 'cause he had tubes in him when he first came. And to watch him Saturday toss a little football around in the parking lot, it just really brings tears to your eyes. And in this group of people, I don't know what the final numbers are, we'll make that available though when Terry gets them out, but it was a huge success and a great community effort by a lot of businesses. I think everybody who has a business had their name on that moniker there. And so I want to thank everybody and I want to thank Stevie and his family for inviting us in to just do a little something for that little boy. So, I won't go on with my other piece about beautification, but now that I mentioned it, I noticed a lot of people are picking the grass and picking up the sand and trying to keep, get the place looking good and just keep up your efforts. And I'll keep recognizing you every week, 'cause I think that every little bit helps. It's hard to do it all at once, but if everybody's doing their fair share and doing a little bit, the place looks nicer every week. Thank you.
Mr. Slavin.
Mr. Holmes, I didn't tell you that he was a major contributor to the event on the bid that he did for a trip to Daytona. Never mind the figures, it's all fine. It's nice to see. The Oyster Festival, as Mr. Titlebaum mentioned, was really good because they went ahead and they looked at Farmer's Almanac and decided to use the Farmer's Almanac to pick a day. And I think it really worked out well for them. It wasn't a lucky guess. And we saw a lot of people buying a lot of product from the vendors, so I think we have the basis for a very strong event going forward.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Go ahead. You want, go ahead, you can go back, one more time.
There's one thing that I forgot. It is, you can see on the boat.
You have to look for the little yellow dot.
There it is. One thing I forgot, and we brought this up, I know I brought this here many times last year, success in Onset. Up on our osprey pole, the new pole, that's down by the pump station, the birds have come back, they've put their nests, and I saw her up there this afternoon flapping around. And so our next step, we have two other things we'd like to accomplish there. We've put in for, somebody's applying for the grants now, to put up that little educational table, you know, those little tables with the sign? And we'll have a little story there about ospreys. And we're also working on getting a webcam to put at the top of the pole so that people could view it online, to go in and see what ospreys do and watch them. But I just want to say that she's back, the birds are back, and so it's a great relief and thanks to everybody again. I mean, that was a community effort to get that pole put up, put it down by the pump station, to get the platform built and to get that all done with the N-Star Now Ever Source, I guess, and the town. So, kudos to everybody again. And we may be asking for a little bit of money to get that sign put up and the webcam, but success again.
Thank you. Mr. Whiteside, please.
I haven't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't realize you weren't finished.
Sorry.
It's okay. We all said.
Yeah.
Good. Mr. White has his usual Thursday event, nine o'clock in the morning over at the Agawam Housing Authority in their, in their office there. I believe Mel Lazarus is gonna continue his discussion on jewelry and watches it. And that starts at nine o'clock in the morning. We have Dining for a Cause, and this is basically for the Onset Beach Jazz Festival and Middle School Music Program. If you go to the Ninety-Nine Restaurant on Cranberry Highway on the 6th of May between four and nine PM, wherever you go there, fifteen percent of your guest check will be donated to the organization. We've been meeting as, not as selectmen, but a couple of us have been meeting with other people in town about a townwide trash pickup on the 30th and 31st of this month. We're reaching out to different areas, schools, different organizations. So this is gonna be a townwide pickup program on those two days. But this is not just a one-time deal. What we're trying to put together is an organization that this will be a constant piece that will happen on a constant basis. We'll basically try and keep this town clean once and not go back and three or four weeks later see it all messed again. We'll have basically people responsible for certain areas of the town, they'll have their own committee groups, et cetera. We're gonna start fundraising and we're gonna try and make this a permanent piece to basically fix the trash problem of Wareham, 'cause I think this is the worst year I've ever seen it. That's all for me today.
Mr. Whiteside, please.
Thank you. Want to remind people about the walk in June, the Relay for Life, which is what the purple ribbons are about. That will be at the middle school, at the track, Anderson Track. The Gleason Family Y is having a 5K on the 16th, just wanted to remind you guys and gals about that. Mr. Slavin already talked about the townwide pickup, which is the 30th and the 31st. And I want to actually recognize some citizens who, they must love trash. Rita LaBouillier is the lady on Onset Beach. She's awesome. Mr. and Mrs. Roger Long are the people who really have been taking care of the Lopes Field and making sure that there's a trash container there as well. Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Taylor have picked up Crooked River Road and Stillman Drive by themselves in three days. The pile of tires that was there that you all got upset about were tires that had been discarded about three weeks ago. So, we have some people who are spending an hour a day on the weekend doing the right thing. If you're gonna be doing the right thing, make sure you have a plastic container, because there are a lot of sharps out there, okay? Make sure that you're not handling them, or you're handling them with care. And that's, oh, I got another announcement. Municipal maintenance is trying very hard. They spent four days in the Agawam Cemetery and they're spending four days in Center Cemetery to get the cemeteries ready for Mother's Day, which is this coming weekend, and Veterans' Day, which is the following weekend.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. Yeah, okay, I wrote it down. That's what happens when you go looking for graves, which is what I've been doing. The other thing is, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that the senior program could use volunteers for the Meals on Wheels program. I have done that, Mr. Slavin has done it, maybe just one day a month is a good way of keeping in touch with your neighbors here in the town. Thanks.
Okay. I didn't know who it was that was picking up Stillman Drive, but I get on that road every day and it's the Taylors, I have to thank them, because they've cleaned up that whole road from one end to the other. And at the same instance, I have to be angry at whoever you are that has since gone back and thrown trash, not just a little piece, but a substantial amount on that road again, after these folks have just done their thing. You should be, whoever you are, you should be ashamed of yourself, absolutely ashamed of yourself. I mean, these folks go out there on their own time and just trying to help out the town, they clean the road up, and you come along and I see, I saw an empty six-pack out there, some beer bottles thrown out there, some paper plates and stuff thrown out there like they're having a party out in the road. It's a shame, it's just a shame, that's all I can say.
There also were mattresses on Squaw's Path over the weekend, so if you're moving out of your apartment, leave the mattresses for the landlord to take care of. Stop throwing stuff out on our streets.
This purple up here is all about purpling up. I know they're running around Relay for Life and they're purpling everything. So if you happen to be walking down the street and they grab you and throw something purple on you, give a few bucks, you know? And let's see if we can help them raise some money and really kill that goal that they've been working on. That'd be really nice. The next thing I want to announce is I'm going to take the selectmen, they don't know it yet, on the road. We're literally gonna, I've cleared this with WCTV, and the first place we're gonna go is to Onset. And we're gonna have our meeting in Onset. I'm not sure what week yet, but I'll let everybody know when the time comes. I think it's nice that, you know, we sit here in this meeting every single week and we talk about what affects people's lives, and a lot of people don't ever get here and never get to see it. Well, I think if we maybe go into some of the other communities, they might feel like, you know, we're just regular people like them trying to make the best decisions we can. And that maybe it might be a nice idea for them to see us actually in their neighborhoods. So, we're gonna do that. And I'll let everybody know, so I, way ahead of time as we do it, we're probably gonna go like one week and then maybe a month later to another spot or something like that over the course of time, okay? And WCTV says they can handle it no matter where we go. So, if we're outside in the vestibule somewhere, they can handle it, whatever happens, all right? But it's gonna get set up, I just want everybody to know, I'm letting the members know as well as we do this. All right, Alan has one more thing, I think.
Actually, two quick things. The Cape Flyer officially starts May 22nd. It's, that Friday is the first run. I've actually reached out to the Wareham militia to see if they would maybe, I don't have an answer yet if they participate, and when it comes into Wareham, they'd actually probably shoot at the train or something, I don't know, but we're gonna see if we can have some little event there. Hopefully, some of our citizens will participate and take, like we did last year, take the ride, go out, get an ice cream and Hyannis, and then come back on the ride. And, just one, senior movement, I forgot there was something else. That's it for now, it's all right.
Fortunately, you're a senior, so you can get away with that.
Well, I'm past the senior now.
All right, so next up is citizens' participation, it's back this week, yay! I see a hand back there. Come on down, Mrs. Slavin.
She's not banned, huh?
Anybody else, by the way, wants to talk to us? Okay, we'll get to you in a second. Three guesses. First two.
I had one thing.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Sandy Slavin, precinct three.
Okay.
I had one thing I came for, but listening to you, I want to say a couple other things. Purple's a big thing. The Wareham Garden Club planted the seven planters on Main Street, all purple pansies to support the Relay for Life.
Oh, nice.
I understand that our police recently gave out a litter ticket for somebody on Merchant's Way. I do owe them a batch of fudge. I promised I would do that. And I'm a member of CPC Community Preservation Committee. We're down three members, we're about to lose our fourth. We are a commission of nine. The five of us must all be there for us to conduct any business. So if anybody's interested in joining CPC, we have money, we can spend it, we need members. Now for the reason I'm here. July 1st, 2013, Mr. Shabano asked the Board of Selectmen to form a master plan committee. Almost two years now, we don't have one. I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to please rededicate yourself to making that happen. We have, looking for a planning board, Board of Selectmen, school committee, conservation commission, CEDO board, finance committee, Affordable Housing Trust, Wareham and Onset Fire Districts, Board of Health, Waste Water Treatment Center. So, we have almost two years now, we've got nothing done. And our master plan was created in 1998, almost seventeen years ago. It needs to be updated. I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to please move on it. We don't need a planner to get this organization committee going, to get our first meetings going. You, in, let's see, 2013, the Board of Selectmen appointed two people, two members at large. They expire this coming June and have had no meetings. So, I mean, you're about to lose your two at-large members also. So please, can we get the master plan going? Thank you.
Okay, next, come on down. Come down and identify yourself for the record too, please.
Hi, John Salerno from Onset.
Okay.
I just come before the board, I did the same thing last year. We, I know times are tough, money's tough, but there's an easy fix for the crosswalks temporarily, where there's, they really none exist if you look at it now, the white lines are gone. But if we just get the barrels down temporarily before they do the lining, the pedestrian crosswalk barrels, we could get them to slow down a little bit, and I think that would be an easy fix without really having to spend a lot of money.
I think we did that last year, too, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, they eventually got the paint, and it just takes time, I understand. There's other things that are on the, they have to get done. And now that we're collecting money for the kiosks, which is, I understand where resort community, community people really want to come, they're willing to pay, and we should collect money. But we need to also offer them some services as well. If we're gonna take their money, we should provide things. In particular, I'd really like to see the bathrooms open. It's, we've got seventy-degree days now. There's no place to go to the bathroom in town. I understand, I'm not complaining, 'cause people use my bathroom, I'm not gonna turn anybody away. You turn a senior citizen away, I'm not going to do it. We, more than likely, but that's not the point. The point is, it's, it's sort of unprofessional to, to charge them to park, be in a community, and then not have a place to go to the bathroom. We have bathrooms, we just have to open them. And that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else to speak to the board this evening? Seeing none, I will close out citizens' participation. All right, we're gonna jump down to section eight for a minute, and we're gonna vote on the general obligation bond anticipation notes. Could you come down, Mr. Foster?
Thank you.
I believe the clerk has the paperwork for the motions. This should be quick. The town just went out to bid for a $317,600 general obligation bond anticipation note. We were, we received three bids. The lowest bid was from Cape Cod Five at .50% interest, fifty basis points. The net interest cost on this will be $1,0579.18. And you have to award that tonight, so I can... Okay. All right, you ready for the motion, Judy?
I'm gonna have Mr. Titlebaum make the motion, because he's a faster reader than I am.
Okay, let's go for it.
I move, Board of Selectmen of the town of Wareham certified that at a meeting held May 5th, 2015, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimous, passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board and the clerk's custody, voted to approve the sale of a $317,600, 50%, .0, .50% general obligation anticipation note. The note of the town dated March 8th, 2015, payable March 6th, 2016, to Cape Cod Five Sense Bank at Par, further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the note, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated April 24th, 2015, and a final official statement dated April 30th, 2015, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the end note. Further, voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary, convenient, to carry to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. With the clerk further certified that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted and demanded conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General, is set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 parentheses two, parentheses B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remaining so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 38, Sections 18 to 25 as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any discussion?
I hope not.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
Great, thank you. That was easy.
We'll sign them and give them to you. You, you want to take them back with you?
Yes, he does.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We'll sign them for you in a minute.
Okay.
I'm trying to find something.
Mary Ann have to authorize it?
Not today. She doesn't need. It's not a necessity that the clerk attend the meetings. It's more or less to review or to acknowledge your signature, so she's watching from home and you should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Fortunately, she's gonna get to say it. The, I'm looking for that email.
Which one?
For the record, I did previously read what Mr. Titlebaum read into the record, because I'm the person who is recording the vote.
No, I can't find it. Okay.
Just look up on the town thing for the two people that are being replaced.
I have the list.
Passed away. Can you be able to do that? He'll tell you what their, what their status was. You just go to Wareham.
Rich, would you look up on the zoning board for me online?
I have it right here.
Did you get the two, the two dates? I want to make sure the dates are right for the two people. What I need to know is the two people that were replacing Mary and...
Well, it was in the...
Right here. Oh, it's here. All right, so that's the dates.
Yeah, we're all set.
Those are the dates we use. Okay. All right, never mind, it was in the thing, so we have it. Thank you. Sorry about this dead air, but we gotta get this done, so.
I can sing.
Please don't. Oh.
This one.
Do you sing?
No.
How do you know she doesn't sing?
She doesn't sing.
Huh?
She doesn't sing.
I could clean the refrigerator.
Yes, you can. This is what we call dead air.
I told you I'd sing.
We...
I can tell jokes?
No.
No? Okay.
We can go next week, too, right? Or maybe not, tactically, I have it someplace else.
Not next week.
There you go.
Because we enrolled the maps, we enrolled the maps for the cemetery, not to...
Thank you.
Ice cream soda.
Ice cream soda?
Yeah.
Do you have ice cream sodas?
Extra squirt of vanilla, extra squirt of vanilla, too.
I like root beer float, you got a root beer float?
Margarita for Cinco de Mayo.
Margarita, Cinco de Mayo, there we go. A couple hours.
If two of us meet, we can go have one.
Yes, we can. They have a line out the door today.
I heard the bartender.
They're full, they're waiting in there.
Oh, well.
Which one? Downtown or the other one?
Down here, heard the bartender in show.
Really? Not a good thing.
You are on the record, guys.
This one? Thank you. All right, so, we're just waiting for...
I'm just waiting to review the documents, yes, sir. I want to make sure that they...
All right.
May I have those, Mr. Slavin? May I have those, to double-check them?
You want to double-check them?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's your job. Not a problem. There you go. Check them and give them out. Steve gonna grade us on this?
What did I say, you know, today, you taking over, when you taking over today?
That signature.
When you taking over today?
Today.
Why aren't you sitting over there?
'Cause...
It's a long day.
Excuse me, that's a long day. Maybe while he's here and there's difficult, this dead air, maybe he could tell me what that was for.
He just did.
He did.
So, he just gave...
That was actually the second year of a $397,000 bond authorization for capital equipment for the school department. Textbooks and computers.
Yeah, John, that's Derek's designate.
Yeah, he's the acting town administrator.
Absolutely, he's the designate. Yes, he is. Yes, he does agree. How's that?
Very good.
That thirty-five cents.
Yeah, right. There you go.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, right, nothing more.
You'll have to take all those little tabs out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so next up is appointments, please. The clerk...
The first appointment...
You did for a while.
Is a new appointment to the Community Preservation Committee, and it's recommended, is Brian Litchfield here? He is not.
No, he's not.
No. Is a new appointment to the Community Preservation Committee. And it's recommended, is Brian Litchfield here? He is not. No. He has evidenced interest to become the, um, open space representative to the Community Preservation Committee, and it's been recommended by the CPC to have him do so. So I would move that Brian Litchfield of three ninety-eight Main Street, Wareham, Mass, be appointed to the Community Preservation Committee as the open space rep to a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll second.
Excuse me. Point of order, I think you've got a bad address on Brian.
Well, it's all right.
That happens to be my address.
Oh, really?
Maybe you've changed names, we don't know.
Okay, then.
All right, let's see what your address says. Let's see what your address says, shall we? All right, do you have his address?
Oh, it does.
No, yours, yours is the same, yeah, okay.
Have you seen Brian walking down the hallway later? His timing must be very good.
Oh, my goodness.
Perhaps the motion could be amended to just say Brian Litchfield of Wareham?
Yes, I just amended it.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Just a very quick comment. Joe Leggett had that position for quite a while, and Mr. Leggett has really served the town quite well, and we really should thank him for his time doing this.
Thank you.
All right, so motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. And is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's five zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. All right, next up?
The next is, um, three different appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The first is to, um, appoint an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Carl Baptiste Senior. Is he present? Would he like to speak?
Come on down, you're the next contestant.
Good evening, Carl. Good evening.
Hi, Carl. Just tell us who you are for the record.
Carl Baptiste.
Thank you.
And you have an interest in serving as the, um, the associate member to the ZBA?
Yes, I do.
And you have attended some meetings?
Yes, I have.
Wow.
I... Okay. I will move Carl S. Baptiste Senior of Two Aunt Hannah's Lane, Onset, Mass, to the associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
All right, next up?
Also, there's one more associate position available, if anybody would like to apply.
Okay, next up?
Uh, the next would be a full-time member to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Al Khalasi, are you present? Would you like to address the board?
Good evening. Gentlemen. Good evening. For the record, Nazir Al Khalasi, Twenty Tower Terrace, Wareham, Mass. And I'm here before you to apply for, uh, a full member, full-time member for the ZBA.
Okay.
So I thank you for the opportunity and hope won't disappoint you.
For the record, we appointed you as an associate member about two or three weeks ago, I think.
Uh, yeah, for the...
That's fine.
Unfortunately, we had to death in the board.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Then I move that Nazir Al Khalasi of Twenty Tower Terrace, Wareham, Mass, be appointed as a full member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion?
If I'm looking at the sheet here right, is, is Nazir replacing Richard or Mary?
Richard.
Yes.
Richard says six fifteen.
Six fifteen, so...
Six fifteen, okay. Yep, I can.
Which means you just, you just go up for reappointment again on July first and then...
So the motion will be amended to June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by, uh, Mr. Holmes. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Al Khalasi.
Thank you, just for the record, uh, I knew Jim very well through meetings, and he was a great guy, so hopefully I could do what he did. So...
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My condolences to his family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yakabachi?
Mr. Yakabachi?
No, but if you don't want to. Okay, fine.
Unless you have something you wanna say.
Your main, your address is three ninety-eight Main Street.
You wanna change your address and move somewhere else?
Okay, thank you. I will move that James Yakabachi, three ninety-eight Main Street, Wareham, Mass, be appointed to be a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Yeah, let's check that.
I did.
It's seventeen, right. Okay, uh, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your service. All right, next up is application for four, uh, one-day wine and malt licenses for Buzzards Bay Productions. Hello there.
Dave? You didn't say your usual...
Yes, I can hear you. Why don't you tell us what you're here for, and then we'll start?
Well, I'm here for four one-day license, ones for comedy. That's on the ninth. The next two are for music, and the fourth one is, we're gonna try to create a night in Havana about turning the place into a club like Lucy and Desi, that kinda thing. So I don't know how we'll do it, but we're gonna take and make enough of it.
Like a swing band kinda thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a few people in town that are, that are interested in helping us do it.
Kind of the band thing, right?
I lost one of my, um...
Okay, um, which was?
One of the ZBA's. Oh, sorry. Senior moment, let me tell you.
Okay, um...
May I? Okay.
All right, so is there any questions for the, for the gentleman?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven, you were up first.
On the music?
Yes.
Are we going to have, music gonna be like a band?
Well, which one of these?
Well, it says comedy, then it says music, then it says music.
Correct. The two in the middle?
Yeah.
Will be music, they'll be bands.
Okay, will we have, uh, with a recommendation from the, our police chief with the issue we had before?
Some security, correct. The other thing he recommended is, I have black shirts for staff. They've been changed.
To white?
Well, this is...
Yellow?
It's green, honey.
I'm colorblind.
It's green.
I'm colorblind.
You're colorblind.
Sorry.
It's green.
It's green.
It's a bright, bright green.
That was one of the things he had said. They told me that it was very difficult for them to look and see who was affiliated with the business.
Everybody wears black.
Precisely. Something that never crossed our mind, but here it is now, so we changed that out. Yes, and, um, anybody else?
Document is all in order.
I just wanted to bring that up because we did have an issue that we needed to take care of.
Did we not have a detail officer, too? You have a detail guy over there?
No, we do not.
You don't?
No.
Then I need to ask...
He didn't?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, on the ninth, you're going to be doing what?
Comedy.
On the fifteenth, you're going to be doing sixteenth?
That'll be, there'll be bands in there.
What kind of bands, sir?
They'll be called hardcore bands. We've done it before.
I'm older...
Loud music that's kind of out of my, uh...
Nothing you wanna know.
No.
No, and so it's a twenty-one and over?
No, there'll be, there'll be probably a few people that'll be younger than that. The issue that we had before was a whole different genre of music.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, sir.
It's not the same, not the same animal, and it won't come back there again.
Okay, thank you. The twenty-third?
That's also this hardcore stuff.
Thank you, and the thirtieth?
That's gonna be the night in Havana. That's gonna be something that's geared up more for adults, and we're supposed to turn the club into like a club, like you would see with Desi Anez and Lucille Ball, that style.
People who don't even know who they are.
Well, I know that, but you do, and I do.
Ooh.
I don't know what you're talking about. Hey, Lucy.
But as far as, as far as the other, the other stuff that has to do with all of the, of the problems that I had, that genre, that music is, we already mixed it. It's not gonna come back. We don't want it back.
Well, thank you for that, because this is...
Yeah, well, nobody needs that kinda headache.
Yeah. Especially you.
Precisely.
You ready for a motion?
All right, uh, any other questions? Whatever motion, please?
Move that the Buzzards Bay Productions, Inc. of three oh six five Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, be, um, for May ninth, May sixteenth, May twenty-third, and May thirtieth, from seven P. M. to twelve P. M., be granted a license for the sale of beer and wine. Period.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero. Thank you, have a good time.
Thank you.
Be safe.
We'll try.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm all set?
Do you wanna make sure you're not sitting there, wanna say?
Oh, all right.
Excuse me, can I just, one question? Quick, one quick, quick question. No, 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 no. What color was Lucille Ball's hair?
Red was red. Go ahead, I don't know why that came in.
Steve, Mike, please, buddy.
We had set a policy.
Two weeks. Two weeks. On having some time between the, we got the request in, in the events, right? I think it was two weeks. And here we are approving two of these now, within two weeks. Two of these dates are within two weeks. I understand the funeral thing, the guy died, I mean, and there was an issue with the house license, right?
This is a different one.
This is my fault, 'cause I should've put it on the week before.
Do we need to adjust that policy so that we're not always...
The policy works fine. Most of the time, ninety-nine percent of time, it's gonna work. It's just that I should've put it on the week before it was there, but we never got it on.
It's not a problem, I'm just saying if it...
We did have it in the office.
If these are close, then we can just change the policy or something.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're gonna be okay, although we may not be for Friday's meeting, so... Might be another story. Hopefully that's gonna resolve itself. All right, onset parking. Come on down, Mr. Buckminster, and, uh, you're gonna handle the summer soft-shell clam regulation as well, right?
Yep. Thank you. Fun meeting tonight.
So you can do whatever you choose first, I don't care.
Okay, uh, I'll go by your agenda. The parking is on the, uh, the first section. All I'm asking is, uh, just, we could discuss adding the Shellpoint parking lot to the resident beach and, uh, transfer station sticker, that's the combination sticker?
Okay.
Uh, that people purchase to go to Little Harbor, Swiss Beach, and Swiss Neck, as well as the transfer station. And I just would like to see if that we could, uh, use Shellpoint as another offering on that residential, um, sticker. I don't think it'll make too much of an impact on the kiosk that's operating down there, and I think vehicles that are, that don't have that sticker would still pay at the kiosk like they normally would. We would just, you know, check all the vehicles prior to, uh, to check for the resident stickers.
What did Mr. Sullivan have to say about this? Did you talk to him?
I, I did, uh, propose it to him, and I was told to address it to the board.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody here could discuss with him.
No, he, you know, he didn't leave us any input into it either, so unfortunately, I should've... What was it?
He was in favor.
He was, okay.
Is this not his thing, Peter?
No, he's, uh, he's been handling the parking program.
Derek was designated to Gary.
He was his designee. He was, he was, uh... Yeah, and he's, he's the designee for, for the parking study for Mr. Sullivan, yeah.
Are we gonna have a different sticker? Uh, the sticker that we have, that we've already issued?
The current sticker, what we're doing is adding to it. Um, I, I'll be very quick, I'll use Town of Warren as a reference. They, um, you know, obviously we have three beaches that we currently offer. They have, they offer probably ten, uh, public access sites for their, their transfer station, and, well, they're, they're only beach sticker, they don't have the transfer station with it. So I'm just, I'm just thinking that this is a beneficial move for the, the, uh, the residents that already have purchased the beach sticker itself. So as they buy their beach stickers, it would be utilized for this. So it's not a new sticker, it's not anything, it ju, it would be combined into that whole resident beach sticker, so...
This also gets access to all the residents?
Yep. For the Shellpoint, 'cause that was a, that was a contentious issue for a little
while.
Yes, and, and...
Version number two or something.
And it doesn't take but five minutes to walk around the parking lot to identify vehicles that are down there that have it. The stickers are an enormous revenue generator for the town, and it, uh, it, it far exceeds what the parking program makes, and I, and I think it's, it's a, it's a good benefit, they get the opportunity to use the transfer station, plus now they have an additional beach on top of it, so...
Go ahead, Ms. Whiteside.
Which was the original idea?
Excuse me. I recognize Ms. Whiteside. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a question, sir. When I come into your office to apply for this, I have to provide you with what information?
We need a vehicle registration, um, is really what we require on everything, or you can bring in your vehicle excise tax bill, um...
How do you ensure that I'm a resident?
Through, uh, either your tax bill, or if you reside in town or you rent here, you have thirty days to change your driver's license, so we need some proof showing that you are primarily or legally domiciled in Wareham. So we do, um...
And do you offer...
I, I apologize.
No, that's a...
We have, uh, people that come in with, um, trusts, we have people that come in with major utility bills, uh, your driver's license, your registration, uh, things like that.
How many, um, stickers can I get?
You can buy one per vehicle.
So, and the, and the vehicle I. D. numbers on the sticker, am I correct?
We write the license plate number on the, on the actual sticker.
So there's no way that somebody can, you know, own some, a lot of property and be handing out stickers to people who are renting?
No, they can't, um, they, they could use a, uh, the guest pass? No, they can't, um, they, they could use a, uh, the guest pass-
Right.
For the, um, the beaches that are designated for the guest pass, but that, this is strictly just the resident beach sticker.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
I'm still confused by this. All, this isn't doing anything. All it says is that Mr. Buckminster, uh, would like to just say that the lot is not changing. It's still part of the parking program. All he's saying is if somebody pulls in with a, like a sticker I got from you?
Yep, yeah, you're right. You have the triangle, the triangle, green, resident.
This is day-to-day. This isn't any kind of change of land or anything. I don't know what, what you're at. Are you looking for us to make a motion?
Well, the Board of Selectmen are, are in charge of the parking lots. The, and how it's explained to us is that the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator have control over the parking lots with the, on the, on-street and things of that nature.
A road commissioner.
Gary, I think I'm missing something then, because I'm not seeing you. You're not changing the parking lot. You're just saying that I can park there with my sticker.
We wanna, I, what I'd like to do is offer another beach on that sticker, basically. So instead of, instead of the three that we currently do, now we got four, and you've got some, and you've got some locations in onset center that you can park.
The town administrator can't do that. We're not doing anything.
This, this sticker-
We have the parking lots, unfortunately.
I'm not changing the lots.
The sticker is also accepted on the, um, if you go parkwareham.com, you can look at the actual onset parking map, and the, the areas that are marked in blue, which are near, which is near the, um, boat ramp, and there's also angle parking on Tenth Street, and I believe it's Highland. This sticker is also accepted in those locations, so you do have-
Then I would ask the clerk to just make the motion and-
Mr. Titlebaum, you have next year up.
Yeah, just, just to further amplify upon Selectman Holmes's question, uh, the general laws actually make the selectmen the custodians of town property. Uh, our charter makes the town administrator the custodian of town facilities. So that's why we have to vote on this. And we have in the past voted to add this to the parking program, to put a kiosk up and everything else. Therefore, in order for us to change the terms of that, it's incumbent for us to do this, so I'm just explaining to the people out there who might be confused.
I think it's a good addition to the stick.
Ms. Whiteside?
Um, I move that the selectmen authorize the resident sticker, transfer station sticker, um, to include Swift's Beach, Swift's Beach, Swift's Neck, and Little Harbor, as well as the Shellpoint parking lot.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Five zero zero.
Thank you very much. I think that helped greatly.
Gary, you wanna do the shellfish thing, somebody, please?
Uh, shellfish is the, um, same as, every year, we have to bring a seasonal restriction on harvesting of soft-shell clams. It's, it's a, uh, effort to kind of preserve the stock that we have, so we designate certain locations. Uh, they're all the same locations, with the exception of, uh, I want to say number seven. I've added to it just to give a little more area, uh, and it's the southerly shoreline, um, across from Shellpoint Bay, which is that, um, it goes along the marsh and through that area. Um, there, there are some in there. There's nothing extravagant, but it's another area, so people can harvest some soft-shell clams, so. Um, and then the only other restriction would be the management area number three, which is Long Beach, which has a, um, certain days you can harvest on, uh, which is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so no changes. It's just that every year through our, uh, shellfish regulations, we have to have the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion so made. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Slaven, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion?
Would you like me?
When do we start do oysters?
Oysters are out. Uh, we actually, we stopped the oysters, uh, April thirtieth, unfortunately, but-
Nice, nice. Thanks again for taking me out to see you. Thank you very much.
You can come down and help us. You can help us grow.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
They're good oysters.
The, the, um, licensing is, will go into effect starting June fif, June first, two thousand fifteen-
Correct.
And continue through September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Um, in accordance, yeah, in accordance with, so I move, well, I think I'd like to identify the locations, just because the pe, people here-
We do it on the maps.
Okay, you do it on-
Online on our website.
Okay. Um, in accordance with Division Eight, Article One, Section Three of the Town of Wareham Shellfish Rules and Regulations for the Taking of Shellfish Eels and Sea Worms, yuck. The Board of Selectmen shall close all areas to the taking of soft, soft shell, uh, you can't do that, soft-shell clams effective June first, two thousand fifteen through September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, with the exception of the following areas as listed.
Could you repeat that?
All right, motion made by Ms. Whiteside. Do I hear a second?
We had a, we had a prior motion by Mr. Slaven and myself. We moved to approve.
But, but you didn't, okay.
All right, amended by Ms. Whiteside.
It's been read into the record, whatever.
We didn't vote on that, so we'll, we'll take Mrs. Whiteside's, uh, motion because she read it completely, and-
Second.
Here a second, seconded. Okay, so the motion's made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum.
I'm submitting my motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you.
I corrected one of your spelling errors.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the oysters.
I'll think of the grade afterwards.
Would you like to go on my flag fest for the parking program?
Good night.
Thank you.
I appreciate do oysters, bud.
All right, so next up is the liaison positions. Um, everybody has positions. The, we don't, is there anybody who wants to give up one that they have, or is there anybody who wants to take on another one? That's the basic point. Go ahead, Mr. Titlebaum.
It, well, it's occurred to me that we need to appoint a liaison of the sewer commissioners, because they've just taken over.
Okay.
I think you'd be a fine choice for that.
Yeah, I'll do that.
It also occurs to me, previously, we've had a liaison to the actual sewer plant. I don't think we need that anymore.
Nope, that was me.
I don't know. I was thinking, perhaps, we might want to have one to the police department, or maybe not. I don't know.
No.
Just leave it alone. If you, if you don't want to do downtown departments, then just keep that out.
Does anybody want to, does, is everybody happy with what they have?
Yeah.
All right, fine. All right. You, you got something you want to change?
Well, I'd like to, um, note that Mr. Um, Titlebaum is, should be a, added to the cemetery commissioners. He's been able to cover on a couple of occasions where I have not been able to, um, so I think it's appropriate for his name to appear on the list.
Yeah, I don't know if I want that relationship formalized.
You want it as an alternate?
Yeah, you can put me on as an alternate.
I would, I would ask that that be done.
All right.
That's a cemetery for me.
And then, wait a second, there was another one.
Okay, I put you on as an alternate. Anybody else?
There's another one.
All right, this is-
There is one correction to be made to the document right in the first one, the Affordable Housing Trust. It's got me listed as liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm actually a voting member.
You're actually a member.
So.
So, perhaps in the minutes of down that correction, it will be made to this as well.
All right, that's it? All right, there's nothing to vote on, so.
Well, actually, there were a couple more. Um, remember, uh, when Mr. Slaven was chairman, he made me an additional liaison to Cedar, and I think Judy was an additional liaison to the veterans?
Yes.
And I don't know that that's reflected in here.
Should be, should be.
No.
No. So.
Judy was veterans?
Yep.
Yeah, and I was Cedar.
Judy and Cedar.
Actually, I don't see veterans on here.
It's not, it's not on here, neither is council on aging, and those are both mine.
The council on aging's here.
Where?
Right here, you're right there.
Okay. Veterans is a revitalized one, so it should be me.
All right, so I put veterans, uh, Judy, and, uh, Cedar. Cedar is Peter.
Yeah.
Okay. Was Steve, Steve was on Cedar too?
Yeah, Stevens on there, but.
All right, all right, I'll have it fixed, and we'll get you an updated list next week, and then you can look at it again. If everybody has any more questions, we can deal with it later, okay? All right, moving on. Discussion and possible vote on the process of housing numbers. I don't know how we're gonna do this. Go ahead, Peter.
I, I question whether this even belongs with us. We have a charter, hear me out, Alan. We have a charter provision that took away all authority of the selectmen to do anything with house numbers, and put it in the authority of the road commissioners. The bylaw, which should've been changed at the same time, wasn't, but I think the charter supersedes what the bylaw says, because the charter provision tells us that all of the prior authority of the Board of Selectmen is now vested in the road commissioners to do these things, so I don't see any role for us whatsoever in this.
Mr. Town Council, can you, uh, respond to that for us?
Okay. I have a new copy here, if you want. It just came out, a brand-new one. I think everybody's got a copy today.
There you go. Go for it.
I believe that in history, at one time, the planning board used to do this, and there was confusion back and forth, and I think it finally ended up with a selectman slash road commissioners, which we have no longer.
Right, so that would take it out of our purview, though, like Peter says. I think he's right.
No, he is right. Section three, Rich.
It, I have a question.
So we're, we're out of it entirely?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. You want to let him just answer, and then you'll be up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Selectman Titlebaum is right. Uh, Section three nine B, uh, the final sentence, and this is in reference to the Board of Road Commissioners, "The Board shall furthermore assume the responsibility of street marking and house numbering as determined by the revised October twenty-six, two thousand nine bylaws of the Town of Wareham, Division Three, Article One," and that's the section of the bylaws that referred to the Board of Selectmen doing, uh, street numbering.
Okay.
So this, this could be a fall town meeting cleanup item.
Yes.
Judy's up next.
I have a, a question. Um, when a planning board, or the ZBA approves a subdivision, um, then the road commissioners step in to number the house lots?
Supposed to.
Well, I, I just would point out that that seems to be somewhat cumbersome, in that you got two sets of people trying to get the same thing done, so I, I just make that comment.
Yeah, we used to do it in our office.
I, I know we did.
Of course, now we don't do it anymore. Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll pass on that one, and, uh, we'll move up to any other business not reasonably anticipated in the last forty-eight hours. Uh, Mr. Titlebaum?
None.
Ms. Whiteside?
No, sir.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Slaven. Nothing for me. Okay. Town administration report, we have none this evening, so we'll pass on that. Liaison reports, Mr. Titlebaum.
You know, I'll defer to Selectman Whiteside at this point, while I-
While I think of whether I actually liaised the past week.
Mr. Holmes, nothing. Mr. Slaven?
Give me a second. I met with, um, Cape Flyer Group on Friday. They have a weekly meeting. They've asked me to be included in their meetings, actually, on Monday, sorry, um, as they go along with the program. The program, as we talked last time, they're gonna start reaching out to different council on aging groups, uh, to try and, again, get more traffic through. We're looking for things for Wareham to pick up, but also coming down from Boston, uh, they're gonna be promoting, again, the idea of, on a Saturday or Sunday, you can come down in the mornings, uh, be basically ferried over to Nantucket or Martha's Vineyard, uh, for the day, come back, and basically, all of the train will work back and forth. They're working with the Cape Cod League to try and have promotions for people coming down to watch the baseball games. Uh, they were hoping, uh, they didn't get it done on time, but they were gonna have a Wareham Hyannis game where, uh, basically, the people from Wareham could take the train, go to the Cape Cod League game, then come back by train as well. It may not happen this year, but it will definitely happen next year. They didn't think of it at the time, and there's more synergies like this being put together. The whole idea is to make this Cape Flyer viable for a whole bunch more people overall, and make it so it actually is a day trip, something that works for everybody, and the, the costs, you know, for the Cape Flyer, I think, is eight dollars round trip, uh, and if you're a senior, it's four dollars round trip, which is probably the buy of the year, because you can't drive even from Wareham to Hyannis and back on, on a Saturday or Sunday, you know, timeframe costs or anything, so to me, this is really a, a great opportunity for people living here, just go down, go down to Mercer's Way, pick up a train, go for a ride for the day, and, I mean, the cost for a family, guests coming in, you can't find anything better to deal. That's it for today.
Okay, Ms. Whiteside?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that, um, there have been a couple of volunteers, including Mr. White and Mr. Ferranti, um, who have been actually looking at the cemetery maps and identifying for, um, veteran, for Memorial Day, the location of veterans' graves. Um, about fifteen hours has been put into that effort so far. Um, two of the three town cemeteries have been completed, we think, um, but I just want to thank both Mr. White and Mr. Ferranti for wading through a whole lot of old paperwork to, to make sure that we do identify our veterans. Thank you.
Okay, um, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, well, not remind everybody, to let everybody know that the Board of Selectmen has a special meeting posted for Friday at ten AM here in this room on May eighth, okay? Um, so members, be aware of that, okay? All right, next up is the consent agenda. Could you take us through that, please?
Have a bill from the Law Office of Richard Bowen for the dates, um, December twenty-first, two thousand fourteen through January twentieth, two thousand fifteen. This is not a duplicate. This is going back in time.
Still working on January.
No, he's, he went backwards, um, and the total is fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. I move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Five zero zero. Next up?
We have the regular minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. They have been read and reread by myself, and I would move them to be accepted as presented to you.
So here a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
I move that the minutes of the April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen regular meeting be adopted, or as written. Um, they have been read and reread.
We're here a second.
Second.
Second. A motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining.
Aye.
All right, so four, I mean, three, zero, two. Okay, three, zero, two. All right. All right, and... Is that it? You all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by?
Whiteside.
Ms. Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great night.